Okay, sounds good. I clicked it so many times.
Yeah. Get it back with interest.
We'll figure it out if we have to.
Bounce, bounce.
All right, you guys ready? Good evening, board members and residents. I'd like to call to regular, call to order our regular board meeting for Monday, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. I'd ask that everyone present please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the law for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Badkins.
Here.
Mr. Brado.
Here.
Mr. Olgiati.
Here.
Mrs. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Witt, here. I'm sorry, Mr. Tommonello.
Here.
Mr. Verkes.
Here. All right, next on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, including approval of the regular board meeting minutes of August fourteenth, twenty twenty three, approval of the bills of the amount of one million, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents, and approval of the July twenty twenty-three revenue and expenditure report. Unless there are any modifications, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Olgiati. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next is the approval of the regular agenda. Board members, I'm not aware of any modifications to the agenda, and if there are none, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
All right, is there support?
Support.
All right, we got motion by Mrs. Rose with support by Mr. Tommonello. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Next, I do have some announcements. Our senior center will be hosting their annual senior expo on Tuesday, September nineteenth, from ten a.m. until one p.m. Let's hope for nice weather. And for more information, please contact the senior center at five eight six four six six one four nine seven. The September chipping service through GFL will begin on the week of September fourth this month, as it is the first full week of the month. Remember to place branches butt end toward the street neatly stacked, with branches not exceeding two to three inches in diameter or twelve feet in length. Just a reminder, the concert in the park that was canceled last week due to the rainstorm has been rescheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, August twenty ninth, at six p.m. The concert will take place at Waterfront Park, and the concert will feature Rock Steady. Harrison Township Parks and Rec is hosting a back-to-school bash on Saturday, September sixteenth, at Waterfront Park. Please visit the township website and go to the Parks and Rec tab to pre-register for that event. The Harrison Township Economic Development Corporation is hosting a wine event on September twenty eighth. You can also find information on the township website about that event, and also you can purchase your tickets on the website. And for more information on these, as well as all other township events, you can call the supervisor's office at five eight six four six six one four four five. Visit our website at www.harrison township mi.gov, or follow us on Twitter and Facebook at Harrison TWPMI. Any other announcements?
Can I add something about the, the wine tasting on September twenty eighth? It should be a very, very fun event. I just wanted to let the, our, our, our residents know that everything that we raise through the EDC for, during our fundraiser, was a golf outing or a wine tasting this year. It goes back into the community itself, whether for beautification projects or for other things that are, that are going on. So we really would, would love to see people out there. It's that one oh four sellers in Montgomery, which is a very unique environment to have that type of a party. So it should be just a nice casual social environment that we can get out and meet a few people, business people and, and other, other residents of the community. So we'd love to have as much participation as possible. Thank you.
Sounds good. Any other announcements?
I'll just chip in that the Parks and Rec is looking for additional volunteers. We already have the year planned out as far as events, but we are always looking for more friendly faces. So if you're interested in giving back to the community, helping out, we'd love to hear from you. You can find contact information on the website. Mr. Badkins and I are on that committee.
All right.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the, the efforts that you do for Parks and Rec.
Mr. Supervisor from the Treasurer's Office.
Yes, sir.
Uh, a- as everyone knows, or you received in your, your tax bill, we are holding a Amazon gift card giveaway sponsored by Point and Pay, which is our vendor that manages our online payment system. Our July winners, so we're gonna have two, two winners each month, July, August, September, and October. Michael Long and Nancy Worthman were the July winners, and congratulations to them. And you have three more months and six more chances to participate in the Amazon gift card giveaway. And that's all you need to do is to make a payment on the website through the online system, either new or existing. If you're already existing and are in a payment platform, you're automatically entered. So congratulations to Michael Long and Nancy, Nancy Worthman, and hope, uh, hope we can see some additional winners coming here in August.
So it is a real, very convenient way to pay, and saves, saves the residents' time and money, and also saves the township money. So we encourage folks to try out the online payment. And it looks like we have one more meeting until the last due date for property taxes, so we don't have to talk about that dreadful subject just yet. All right, if there's no other announcements, we'll move forward on the agenda. Item D one regarding some special assessment districts.
Yes, sir. So we have received petitions for the potential creation of a special assessment district for repaving the streets of Cortez, Santos, and Carno. We have over fifty-one percent of the frontage, so we're looking to start the process for SADs. The first resolution tonight is just to consider whether or not we have, confirming that we've received sufficient signatures, and that we'll begin the special assessment process for this project.
Okay.
We just need a motion to adopt that resolution.
So, yeah, this is a, this is a, an SAD proposal that's pretty far along in the process.
Yeah, we have all our signatures done, and so they're hopeful that they will qualify under the county's, you know, reconstruction program to be able to add the drainage to the project. But even absent that, they're interested in work moving forward.
Moving forward. So, so at this time, a rec, a, a, a motion to adopt the foregoing resolution number one for Cortez, Santos, and Carno Streets Improvement SAD Project as presented would be in order.
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Brado. The resolution is in the board packet, but again, this is, I hate to say boilerplate, but pretty routine stuff, once we know that the residents want to move forward. So, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Mr. Badkins.
Yes.
Mr. Brado.
Yes.
Mr. Olgiati.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Tommonello.
Yes.
Mr. Witt, yes. Mr. Verkes.
Yes. Thank you, board. Uh, next on the agenda is item D two regarding the same special assessment district.
Yes, sir. The second resolution here tonight would set our first public hearing for that subdivision's special assessment district for Monday, September twenty-fifth, at our regular board meeting. This will give the residents an opportunity, after we send out a first-class mailing, as well as publish notices in the paper, to come forward and hear any objections to the project, as well as preserve individuals' opportunity to protest the assessment at the state tax tribunal. So what we do is we do mail those out, letters out to the residents as soon as we approve this, and then we run notice in the paper twice. Usually, we try and use the journal, because that's the free paper that everyone gets. So we're able to try and get it in there, so that way we penetrate as many people and get in their mailbox as much as we can.
And, and again, pretty much boilerplate. This is the second step. We've done these second resolutions, so be looking for a motion to adopt the foregoing resolution number two for Cortez, Santos, and Carno Street Improvement SAD Project.
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there support?
Support.
All right. Got a motion by Mrs. Rose with support by Mr. Olgiati. Any discussion, board members? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Mrs. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Olgiati.
Yes.
Mr. Badkins.
Yes.
Mr. Brado.
Yes.
Mr. Tommonello.
Yes.
Mr. Witt, yes. Mr. Verkes.
Yes.
And we, although we'll see it at, at our twenty-fifth meeting, I've been working with Mr. Tommonello in his office to prepare bonding information, so we'll have an agenda on that at our next meeting. So, because again, this will be financed through bonding.
And, and knowing that there's potentially two other projects, I wonder how that, how the, those other projects could impact that bonding?
Uh, the bonds won't be sold until it's closer to the project date, so we would better, and at this point, it's just setting that bonding. So if there's any cost incurred, we're saying like, yep, we're gonna do bonding. So we've had that resolution in place to allow us to.
Gotcha.
To protect our cell.
Understood. Okay. But it is, it is possible that if we are successful in getting some other grants, we could look at some other roads, and there may be some, maybe some expansion to that bonding.
Correct.
Okay, fair enough. All right, uh, so we're done with item D two, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we'll move on to item E one, also from the clerk's office.
Yes, sir. Um, so board before us tonight, we have appeals for our marijuana businesses. Uh, we recently completed the renewal process for the annual permits. Um, we did have one applicant, one of our permit holders did not renew their permit, but, um, we go through and reveal, review all of them. But what the ordinance states is that if a permit holder does not commence operations within two years of issuance of the permit, the permit shall be de- forfeited. However, the permit holder may appeal to the township board for an extension beyond that two years for a showing of good cause. Uh, the ordinance also states that applicants for a permit must be current on their taxes and any other financial obligations to the township. So water bills, um, there was a special assessment or anything like that. We check and make sure that everything's up to date. Um, so we have received, um, information from the five that did not have everything needed to be able to move forward with the standard administrative renewal. Um, and I sort of group them into two different classes. We have three of our applicants that have not, at this point, commenced operations. Um, and then we have two that are in arrears for, one for water bills, and the other is, has not paid property taxes. Um, so we can sort of take them maybe in a couple of different orders. Um, attached to everything, you have the applicants' appeal letters with their information requesting, discussing as why we might want to extend it. Um, and I also believe we have some of the applicants here, so if we're going through them one by one, we can allow the applicants time to be able to speak to their appeal.
Mm-hmm.
And go from there.
So is it, is it fair to say specifically?
The top three, the first three, Pure Gardens, Harrison Suite A, and Hazel Park Growth are all three that have not commenced operations at this point. And then Pure Roots is the company that has a tax issue, and then Tango Jack is the one that has a water bill issue.
Right. And there was one that wasn't, didn't qualify, didn't renew, so there's one that just dropped off the map.
Didn't renew. One that dropped off the map.
So six, six folks didn't automatically qualify. One fell off the map. Five of them said, hey, we'd like a chance to appeal. Uh, and so today, this is that process. Before we, before we begin to hear from the applicants, I might just remind the board that, um, you know, this was a, this, this, this was, and kind of still is, a new venture. Wasn't that long ago when the, the, the idea of this conversation was just not even gonna be considered. Uh, and so when we did adopt our ordinance that would allow for these businesses, we put some pretty tight controls, because we really didn't know what the future would hold. It's important, I believe, for this board to understand that for almost every other business in the township, we don't have this yearly renewal process, this review process. Um, and so we've put what I believe to be some additional constraints on these businesses, and I think that's, I think that's wise. But I, I think it's important that this board remembers that that authority should not be used casually, meaning that, you know, how many restaurants are there? Are they all current on their water bill? Are they all current on their property taxes? Um, you know, how many other pizzerias, party stores, other just small businesses might have issues, and we still allow them to function. So if we're gonna say, hey, we've got a problem with these businesses, I believe it should be a pretty high bar, um, in order to be fair to the commercial arena.
And I, and I can say, like, going through them, you know, I, as the administrator of this and working with the other departments, we would, we have some explanation that we would feel comfortable approving the renewal of all of these at this point. Um, our, our three applicants that haven't commenced operations, we have two of them that have recently undergone a sale, and so they're bringing on new ownership to be able to complete the projects. One of them is basically done. They have their certificate of occupancy from us, I think, a hundred percent done at this point, and they're just waiting for state approval. They're actually, I believe, hopeful that they would be done with their state approval prior to tonight's meeting, and they wouldn't even need the appeal, but the state moves at the state's speed. Um, so they're working through that. Um, I, I know one of the other ones also went through a sale to an established marijuana business. Um, so they were recently, uh, have brought on either a partner, I don't know the specific business relationship, but with Jars Cannabis, and they're, you know, larger organization throughout the, throughout the state that has established businesses. And then my understanding is one of the, the, the last property also may be considered for sale at this time. I've been contacted by some people that are possibly in conversations with, with the property owner for purchase, and I would hate to destroy value at this point if somebody can step into a brand-new building to be able to complete the process. Instead of having a vacant building, you have somebody that might be interested in stepping in and finishing that out. Um, the building's ninety percent done. It's designed to be what it is, marijuana grow and processing facility, so it doesn't necessarily translate into something else at this point in time. Uh, as far as the other two with back payments, I believe Pure Roots, they have submitted a plan that says, that outlines how they're moving forward. They're in a refinancing process, and unfortunately, they were delayed beyond the scope of the renewal timeline. They gave us a timeline for when they're going to finish that, and then they've committed to paying their back taxes at that point, once that refinancing is done. So at that point, we have a business that is currently established in the township, has been operating for at least a year. I don't feel like, at this point, it's our obligation to shut them down.
Well, obligation, maybe choice of words.
Yeah.
Ultimately, um, in the case of Pure Roots, you've got a functioning business that otherwise met all the criteria. They have been in processing. Um, and they gave an explanation for, hey, we've met all the targets except for the property taxes, but we incorporated that into a refinancing plan. And I, and I think the second one.
And then the last one as well, Tango Jack, they are, were behind on their water bill, um, close to fifty-five thousand dollars. They committed to a payment plan to pay it back. Prior to this board meeting, they met the first target, the first targets in their repayment plan, to say, here's how we're gonna move forward with making those payments. So that bill has already dropped twenty thousand dollars. They have, they've outlined a plan to be able to get it back into order with the township. And again, they're an established business that's currently operating in the township, and, yeah, I, I feel like they're making a good faith effort to, to move on.
Both of these are, both of the two that we're talking about here are, are established businesses that have invested millions into infrastructure, and they are up and operating. Um, and that's where I, when I began, I said this looks a lot more like, i- if, if those, if those two business owners were anything other than in the cannabis business, we wouldn't be talking about saying whether or not they have a permission to continue to operate, because you can be in arrears in water, or you could be in arrears in taxes and still function as a restaurant, or a party store, or some other commercial business.
Yeah, and I honestly think that if we had, were writing the ordinance today, allowing some of these things with clear plans would probably be something we would be comfortable recommending to be in the administrative side of it, but it's not. It's an ordinance to come to this board to appeal it. I, I don't feel like, at this point, there's anything outside of what, what I would consider normal to, to be able to move forward with these.
Right, so we ultimately, and I don't, and I'm not sure if that occurred with this board or a prior board, but we realized that in the beginning of stages of this, of movement into the cannabis, um, industry, there are delays, some of which could be supplier chain issues, some of it could be contractors, state licensing. And so at some point, the clerk's office was saddled with the responsibility of deciding, well, do we just automatically renew these licenses? What bar do we have to hit before we renew? So I think, uh, out of, out of an abundance of caution, we set that bar low, so that we said it would be better, and I think this is probably a legal strategy too, we just don't want one individual making a decision on whether a business stays open or closes. So if they don't meet the criteria, bring them back before the board of trustees. This is kind of an appeal level where we could, um, allow for this continuation. In my opinion, I believe all, all five of these have made some level of progress and/or, so, some are functioning, some have some level of progress. Between pending sales, um, it would certainly be my recommendation to, 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 to grant that one-year extension to all five. Ultimately, it results in them paying us a, a, a five thousand dollar administrative fee, allowing them the opportunity to get another year to move forward. For those of you that follow this business, we know that there have been some, um, some financial challenges, where the cost of product went from here to here, and from history in other municipalities and other states where this has occurred, this is kind of a part of the whole process. Things have to shake out. Uh, one of these could be a leader in the industry two or three years from now, but before us, we have the opportunity to allow it to continue or to end.
Well, and I really, and I do think, as the market matures, the market will take care of the problem for us. And it already, we've already, of our, you know, original twenty-four permitted locations, we're down to twenty-two already. So the market's fixing itself. We lost our, you know, any testing. We lost secure transport, one of our secure transports, you know what I mean? So there, there's been this correction in the market, where I don't think it's our place as government to step in at that point. We don't have anyone, I feel like, that's been a bad actor. Those aren't, those aren't the people that I'm coming, you know, if I had somebody that was a yahoo, you know, was dumping product outside, was a pain to be a tenant next to, that's a different story, and that's, that's not what we have tonight.
Great.
Ken?
Yeah.
I, I wanna note for the record that I, I represent Jars, which I see as a, uh, has gotten involved, and it looks like the purchaser of Harrison Suite, who's one of the appellies here, uh, I'm not, Jars never spoke to me about this. I'm not representing them, but I just wanna make sure you know that I do represent them. Uh, represented them today in Roseville, as a matter of fact, but in other communities, I do represent them.
Can I ask a question to our township attorney, Ruth? You obviously, Mr. Ruth, have more experience with different municipalities in, in regards to marijuana licensing. Um, how common are these issues that these businesses in Harrison Township are having in other municipalities?
Well, one, one area that I could talk about is, I'm reviewing all the apps for the, uh, city of Detroit, um, which they thought that they're gonna be able to issue a hundred and twenty-five licenses. And what they're finding is, there's just not the demand for it, because, uh, and those are retail store outlets, uh, because there's a number of issues with financing and such, that it's not putting that, that kind of demand on the municipality to open that many places. So, uh, that, that actually is an August issue in the city of Detroit, so it's very current. Uh, so we are seeing a lot of that, uh, throughout this business and other communities. It's just, uh, like Mr. Witt mentioned, it seems to be, bad choice of words, but weeding itself out, uh, in terms of how many, uh, users there's ultimately gonna be for these licenses.
And, and so we're, we're kind of in a spot of saying, well, I don't know that I, like, like I think Adam said, none of these are bad players. There are different levels. Uh, clearly, two of them are functioning, and, and that's, you know, saying no to them, to me, you know, and I certainly don't wanna, you know, look into the future of practice law, but saying no to them arbit, arbitrarily would probably, could potentially lead to litigation, right? Because they're, they've already made a pretty significant investment. Um, you know, one's current on water, but behind in taxes. One's current on, you know, one, but on, you know, it's, it's part of that, part of that supply and demand issue that the attorney made reference to.
Well, I think any reasonable business person understands that there's a lot of growing pains in this environment right now.
Sure, absolutely. And then, within the other three locations, two have potential sales or completed sales, and one has a potential.
Two, two of them, uh, one, one reorganized the ownership, one, there was a sale involved, and the other one, there, I believe there's a potential sale. I've been contacted by some people. At this point, you know, if we pull the permit, it becomes a standard industrial building space, and, you know, we're sort of destroying maybe value of a.
The potential future.
Yeah.
Right. And, and, um, and again, you know, um, it goes down to a question of saying, okay, well, if of those three locations, two and potentially three, uh, people or groups of people decided that it was worthwhile to invest in, it's kind of, you know, to me, it would be arbitrary to say, wow, I think it's a bad idea that you should invest or try to keep that open. I, at, at this point, um, you know, we're, we are still seeing some attrition. We're seeing some of the businesses drop off. Um, but these five locations appear to have, again, in my opinion, a reason to, uh, consider their, their, uh, renewal for one year. And it comes back to, we, we can talk about this a year from now and see where, where they, where they stand. Any other discussion? Is there a potential motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to discuss them individually.
Sure.
So, uh.
And we have representatives from some of the businesses here, so we can do that.
So, uh, the first one on our list is, um, Pure Gardens, forty-one, three, fifty, Executive Drive.
Yes, sir.
I believe last year, when they came into the, here asking us for an extension, there was some, uh, they were running into delays, whatever the delays were caused by, but seeing what the building inspector's written, how the progress is being made, and even the fire chief with the positive, um, you know, I don't wanna call it accolades, you know.
Movement.
No, they're hitting all their, hitting every, they, they actually have, they've actually earned their C of O.
Yep.
So like, they're, they're everything but the state license at this point. They've checked every box.
I would make a motion to approve Pure Gardens.
Okay, so it would be, would it be the will of the board to kind of look at these one at a time? I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. I mean, I, I, I'm gonna respect your motion either way, but, no, no, it's all right. It's, I just, I mean, as long as, I'm just saying, we, this board usually builds, works toward consensus, and I have no problem with that. But if everyone's comfortable with that, we've got a motion to renew, uh, the license for Pure Garden, correct?
Yes. So I'll, I'll support that, but I believe we do have the right to, uh, request a plan. So, um, I will, I will support the motion if Mr. Badkins asks, uh, if, if the plan is not submitted, to submit a plan on repayment.
If that's not Pure Garden.
Pure Garden is, Pure Garden is, is current.
Is waiting for state approval.
Yes.
The only problem.
So that one, that one.
That's the only one that's not, okay.
Well, that one, so we, we, we're gonna talk about each one. This one has no outstanding hit.
I'll support.
Support as is.
Yep.
Okay, good. So we've got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Tommonello to renew Pure Gardens', uh, license. Uh, is that clear to everyone? Is there any discussion? Does anyone from the public wish to speak on the motion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. So it seemed logical, we would next talk about Harrison Suite A, right?
Yep.
And I don't know if anyone wishes to speak to that.
Is this, uh, is this the, um?
So this is the one that was recently, uh, Jars became interested in this property. Um, and again, I.
So this is a facility that's, so i- i- if I'm understanding this correctly, this facility has been, I believe, in pursuit of a C of O with a few minor things. Uh, it seems like some issues with outside storage, maybe some, I'm going by recollection.
The biggest thing with this, at the, at the point, was the CO2 tank.
Yep.
Was not approved from the fire department, but it was like a minor thing. It was more about, uh, our fire inspector getting the proper paperwork. It wasn't, when I spoke with him directly about it, it was something that he wasn't overly concerned with. You know, it was just a.
And I think there were some minor issues with, you know, weather stripping on a door, is what I recall, and I, I could be mistaken. But again, we're talking about a location that's substantially completed, a- and recently sold to what I would consider to be a significant business in the cannabis industry with jars. So you'd like to think that if that company were willing to invest in this location, it's probably, you know, probably worthwhile to, you know, give them that year's opportunity to see, uh, where they might end up.
Yep, and I did see that, uh, fire inspectors going out on Thursday, so I'll make a motion to approve Harrison Suite A LLC for a one-year extension.
All right, is there support?
I'll support that motion.
All right, get us, motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Olgiati. Any discussion?
So I also see they're current with all their.
Correct. Yep, this is one that's current. Uh, just, just, uh, finalizing.
Yep.
Some things for C of O. Um, all right.
But I, like, I, like, I'm good with the motion, but this is an example of giving people the time they need to get up. But I, like I, like I'm good with the motion, but this is an example of giving people the time they need to get up and running, this is one of the people that last year, Mr. Badkins' point, this is one of the people where we had a longer discussion about, but we gave them the opportunity to fix it and here they are basically.
Almost done.
Almost done.
Right, so, yep. All right, any other discussion? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Uh, next on the agenda would be, uh, well, not next on the agenda, but, but going by what Mr. Badkins kinda started here, Hazel Park Growth.
Yep, uh, just reading, um, the building departments, uh, regarding all the construction on the site has stopped, all permit, building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing permits are expired. The site is not being maintained and enforcement action has been taken to clean up the site. So this is what we had a conversation about last year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, not with this particular applicant, I don't believe.
Don't recall.
But, um, I'd like to, uh, understand the direction and, and what, why, why the construction has stopped. Maybe you had mentioned that and I, I didn't hear it, but understanding what is the plan to finish this and how much time do they need?
And this is one where there's a potential pending sale.
That, that's what, the way I was approached by it, so.
And, 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 and some of this, uh, and, and I think this is important to say, uh, and this is, so the clerk's office handles this renewal project, right? And so I'm not gonna speak for Adam, but, you know, sometimes this is a situation where someone reaches out and says, hey, what's going on on that property, we're considering a sale, well, like, okay, well, is that, what, what weight do you give that? It's a phone call, it's a conversation with someone else, so I don't, yeah, but my point is, is, so, you know, so, so we're faced with, you know, considering, okay, who's, who's looking to buy, what, what's their intention, you know, what are they looking for?
Regardless of the sale, there is no excuse for not cleaning your property. So if somebody's here and wants to talk about it, I'm more than willing to listen.
Fair enough, is there someone here that would represent, um, Hazel Park Growth? So unless the board has any concerns, we open up the floor for, um, okay.
Hi, my name is, uh, Ali Misslmaner, I'm one of the owner, I'm the owner of Hazel Park Growth. Um, just to update, the, uh, permits were renewed with the, uh, the building inspector and he gave us direction to go and what he wanted, uh, cleaned up. So everything's been trimmed down, everything's been put away, everything's been cleaned up and the permits have been renewed. Uh, we are definitely in talks, we have letter in tent, lease is being drawn up, a group out of Lansing, they've been operational for, I think, two or three years now for possible acquisition or merger. So our plan is, yes, we're, we wanna complete, we're so far along, I don't know if you see the pictures, I mean, the building on the inside, it has the watering system, the power, the, uh, lights, the trays, the ba- the racks, so the building is almost there and we've kept up with everything. I think that, uh, now that, when we got the letter, I wanna say we, we got the, once we got the letter, I called the contractor and he got ahold of, uh, Brent and the permits have been renewed. And we're looking to restart everything within the next one to two weeks to finish up this building and either continue on or merge with this group out of, uh, Lansing who is a lot more established than.
Okay, any questions for the applicant from the board? All right, so, I mean, we go back to deliberation, if there's any future questions, we'll, we'll recognize you, but, uh, based on that, I don't know if anybody has an opinion.
Just to add also, I think for us, when we bought the property, it was, uh, raw land, I don't know if everyone's familiar with the property, we've had to develop the whole thing. Obviously, everyone knows about all the, you know, supply chain issues, getting transformers, getting power, getting AC units, this raw materials has really slowed us down. And that's something that, obviously, everyone knows what's happening in the world, so, but we are so close to being done and we renewed our permits and we are gonna be starting back up now that we are almost finalized the lease with the group out of Lansing.
So if you go into an agreement with another company, how long will that agreement take to be solidified and when can you guys get the rest of this stuff up and running?
This, the agreement should be solidified probably within two weeks, cause we're already in progress with it. So, and then getting the building up and running, I mean, we're over ninety percent complete, so we probably only need another forty, forty-five days to complete all those minor things. And the major things are the driveway, the front of the building and the parking lot and the, uh, one side of the building. And then just your minor things, finishing the fire suppression, finishing the security system.
And, and, and it's worth noting, I mean, an extension means that, that there is an opportunity, one of two things is gonna happen, extension results in the business being up and running and no reason for us to consider an appeal. Because maybe a year from now, they satisfy all the requirements, but worst case, if they don't, they would be back before us in a year and we'd have an opportunity to, uh, consider it again.
I would just request that, um, you know, looking at the inside photographs, Joe Public doesn't get to see that, but what they do get to see is the outside. So I'm, I'm asking that you take care of the outside of the building as you have the inside.
Yes, sir.
And, um, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve that for one more year.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Mrs. Rose. Got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Rose to renew, uh, the operational license for Hazel Park Growth for an additional year, uh, any discussion on the motion?
Again, this is not a, uh, you know, you've invested a lot of money, your, your company's invested a lot of money and certainly it's gonna be a great business, but, you know, we just, we just need some help.
Yes, sir.
So our building department doesn't have to go out there and tell people to clean things up, so thank you for addressing that.
Thanks, sir.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Badkins, were you thinking about putting a time limit on, on the cleanup of the out, of the exterior, ninety days?
My, my understanding is that some of that outside work's already done.
Okay, it's cleaned up, it was cleaned up over the weekend. And I know the building inspector, I said, he, uh, the, our G C route applied for the thing, you know, it was approved for extension of the, uh, building permit.
The biggest theme that I've been seeing that I, I have a bit of an issue with is it seems like the couple of these applicants we've discussed, nothing is done until the feet are to the fire, until the timeline is, is coming close and then I, and I'm not overly comfortable with that, I'll be honest with you. Um, and I certainly understand the, the pitfalls of running a business and starting a new business up, I have no issue with that and I, I have sympathy in that regard, whether it's just a request at a, a restaurant, a party store, a marijuana business. But, um, I'm a little uncomfortable with the tone of the way I've seen some of these renewals go and, and I just wanted to kinda put that on record that i- if something happens and, and we're in the same position next year, then I, I, I think that my attitude would be totally different.
Understood, sir.
Yeah, we care about what you do twelve months out of the year, not just the last thirty days before we talk about this, right? That's a theme, right? We, we wanna see those businesses, even if you're in that process, and I, I get it, it's tough, you're like, hey, I gotta pay the HVAC guy, I'm trying to get DTE to get power in here and I gotta pop for somebody to come out and do some landscaping, but that landscaping means something to us, to this as an administrative, as a decision-making board, and I think that goes for every applicant.
And, and, you know, I echo that, you know, but a couple of folks that we dealt with last year knocked it out of the park and they really put forth the effort, so this building being new construction, you can't get anything. So I, I understand some of the pitfalls.
The delays, yeah.
So, um, you would think that transformers and switchgear are sitting on the shelf, they're not, they're, they're a year to two years out, so.
That's right.
And, and that's why, you know, a- again, if it wasn't for the building department's letter, I, I would've, you know, understood the situation.
Thank you, sir.
All right, fair enough, any other discussion? Anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Hearing none, we've got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mrs. Rose to extend the, uh, operational permit for Hazel Park Growth for an additional year, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Next would be, I guess, Pure Roots, uh, this is a location that's currently doing processing, uh, and they're in a build-out for the grow. But, uh, as we discussed, they have, uh, uh, some outstanding taxes due and they explained that they went through a financing process. I think there's some information both before us here and in the board packet explaining, uh, that they anticipate that, uh, completion, uh, that execution, I guess you will, of the refinancing and the ability to pay those taxes in the very near future. But again, also already built out for processing, uh, largely built out for grow, uh, so this is another location where a pretty substantial investment has been made and it is a functioning business.
So just let everyone know when, when taxes are not paid and it looks like, I, I think all of these are still outstanding, but what happens is, um, when taxes go delinquent to the county, we do get our late fee, we also get reimbursed from the county. So we get that money upfront and then the county settles up, so it's not money that's, that's, that we're not getting, that we're not earning interest, that we're not turning over to the schools and such, so, um, just to let everyone know about that.
Yeah, once it goes past a certain point, the county treasurer has that power.
That's right.
And after three years, they have the ability to foreclose.
Looks like water's only two hundred and ten dollars, so I, I'm, I'm okay with that. Is, is there, um, information from the applicant? Is this, is this?
That, that was additional letter there, there was a, there was another letter in the board packet.
There's one in the board packet, one that was provided to us, um, and there is a representative, I believe, here, if there were questions.
It'd be great to have your letter dated, by the way.
Oh, yeah, will do. Uh, Rennie George on behalf of Pure Roots here for any questions. We are refinancing the building, so it just got caught in the timeline, uh, on a total refinance, uh, you know, the power, yeah, concern we don't have because we are getting a transformer next week, getting delivered and, um, getting installed. So we're, like Ken said, we're ninety-five percent complete, we're just selling the transformer and powering it on, um, but it is caught in a refinance, uh, issue. So we've had a delay on getting a second appraisal, uh, and then getting a phase one, which is part of normal requirements of refinance of a, uh, site.
But then again, this would be, in my opinion, something I made reference to earlier, if this were any other business, other than a cannabis business, we wouldn't be discussing a delinquent tax or water bill. There's a process in place and there's penalties in place and ultimately you can lose your property if you don't pay your taxes, but we don't, we don't take that step. And so I, I feel like this would be one where, um, you know, I, it, it doesn't seem to meet the requirement that I would need to say, uh, that, you know, they can't continue to function. There's already mechanisms and first policies in place to deal with past due water and past due tax bills. And they've indicated a willingness to pay it as soon as the refinancing is complete.
And what's the timeline on that?
Should have it by the end of September, or, I mean, the, the appraisal did come back, but the phase one is, we're waiting on a new phase one. So the soil bearings are out.
And phase one is like, like an environmental assessment of the property, before I'm gonna loan you money for your property, I wanna make sure it's not contaminated, right?
We previously had one done four years ago, lender one.
This is the one that there's other properties, parcels?
They have a number of parcels.
There's four parcels.
On, on Joy?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
It's se- it's seventy-five acres total.
The, yeah, the potential, there's a potential for expansion, but obviously at this point, we're talking about this, this location.
Is this runage construction doing this?
This is correct.
Any further discussion or is there a motion?
So Larry, you're, you're okay with the tax plan, that paid us all that?
Yes, yeah, we, we've recovered anything that's gone to.
We've already been paid.
We have recovered, yeah.
Oh, I just see that says.
It's del- it's delinquent at the county, the county's already paid us.
Yes, we get paid as soon as we turn it in.
All right, we got the county's, the county's money out, make a motion to approve Pure Roots, uh, for a twelve-month extension.
All right.
Support.
We got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Brado, we had some discussion, is there further discussion?
I, I remember last year, we, we had this same conversation, but it was more on the, um, appearance of the outside of the building. Um, making occasional trips down there, I've seen a vast improvement and I'm hoping that that stays that way, so, um, good luck and hope you get your transformer.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Hearing none, we've got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Brado, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those, those opposed, motion carries. Uh, last before us is, uh, Tango Jack, again, this is a functioning location, um, very, I, I guess, similar in the sense, uh, to the previous, uh, license holder in the sense that they are a functioning business. They're current on taxes, they're behind in water, they've already made some payments on that water, uh, there are penalties associated with being behind, so, I mean, it's, again.
And they've paid those.
And they've paid those penalties and they've indicated a willingness to, to work toward being current on that water bill. So very, very, very parallel, uh, but all, otherwise, not i- in the case of this location, I don't believe they're looking at any outstanding permits or open construction, they're complete, functioning. They would be renewed had they been current underwater and again, we talked about some of the financial challenges of this industry in this kinda transitional stage.
So, so when we roll water bills to tax, if, if their plan does not include being caught up by that time, the balance will still roll to tax?
Absolutely, yep, yep. Uh, but I, I believe they've indicated, uh, the ability, I think they've got a payment plan in here, so December fifteenth, they're indicating that they would be current.
Okay, I, I'm not exactly sure what day we're gonna roll, but, um.
One, their updated schedule with their twenty thousand dollar payment has it finishing in the end of November.
Okay, thank you.
Gotcha.
That being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve SSQ Industries for a one-year extension.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Brado to, uh, renew the license for SSQ Tango Jack for an additional year, uh, discussion, board?
Not, not really related to the motion, but I know we'll move on once we make the motion, but I just wanna thank both the fire department staff as well as building and water and sewer and treasury, there's a lot of work that goes into these renewal processes. So everyone really pulls together to be able to get these done in a timely fashion, both for the applicants so they can get a response when they're operating and, uh, move through, move through any reapprovals they need for the state, but as well as anybody that needs an appeal, we can get people quick answers so they can make a business plan, so we appreciate that assistance.
And this is five licenses or five locations where there might have been some issues, there were over a dozen more where there were no issues, but still a lot of work involved in the renewal process, so. All right, any other discussion?
Just, um, looking at this, this, this letter, it says, I had a conversation with the township about possibly shifting a five thousand dollar payment over to our water balance if we paid the five thousand dollar renewal fee before we decided not to renew one of our AU licenses. Can anybody explain that and where are we at with that?
They have multiple adult use licenses that they had, uh, applied for in the renewal process as part of their business, but given the current financial situation, they had said, hey, before we actually hit that renewal mark for next year, can we claw that one back? And downscale our stuff as we run through this financial issue and if we choose to add it later, we'll come back and give you five thousand, but we, we feel like that's, you know.
Could be premature, and so ultimately, you can always add licenses on throughout the year, right? So we, we're saying, hey, we renew the location, you're allowed, but if someone says, I wanna add on two more licenses come January, we, we, we allow that. So this was a proposal to just say, hey, we're gonna pull back, but maybe we can apply that, those funds since they're already on deposit with the township so that we're addressing the primary concern that the board might have.
And then the eleven thousand two hundred that they're paying through December fifteenth, that, that obviously doesn't include their, their, their occurring costs right now, their new costs.
Yeah, it's gotta stay current, and actually, yeah, so that, I think the most recent correspondence has a, an updated payment of, um, correspondence dated August twenty-second, right?
And they made an online payment at just under twenty-one thousand dollars, so they're, they're looking for three more payments of approximately fifteen thousand dollars.
All right, thank you for answering, boy.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? Hearing none, is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Hearing none, uh, we've got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Brado to extend or renew the permit for SSQ Tango Jack for an additional year, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. All right, well, thank you, board, this wasn't an easy thing, but I think we got through it and I appreciate the folks who came out to, uh, answer any questions we had. Moving forward on our agenda, uh, is item E two. Regarding the Finance Director Contract Approval, Board Members, Ms. Nicole Jeebus has served as our Finance Director for the last four years. During that time, she has made numerous improvements in the accounting office and performed at a high level, her current contract expires in November. The three, three full-time officials have met with her and negotiated a. The three, three full-time officials have met with her and negotiated a four-year successor contract, which is attached. I recommend the, the approval of the four-year employment contact, contract as presented. So there, the contract is in there. It's a redline contract. We identified all those changes. I think there may have been a few minor changes to the contract that were struck and not redlined, as I recall. Well, like any, anywhere where there was a reference to a ninety-day probationary period, this individual's been working for the township in an exemplary manner for four years now and, um, uh, made improvements in the department. Streamlined the auditing process. Her background was in auditing prior to, uh, coming to work here at the township. And, um, so, uh, we, uh, created the, uh, couple of different modifications to the contract. Looking forward, presumably discussion, but if there's a motion in order, that's okay too.
I know Mr. Verkess had sent out, uh, comparisons to other municipalities. I, I, if you want to make that motion based on the fact, I feel Nikki's an asset to our community and I think that her pay is, her, her pay is, is, is basically in line with, with, with other communities for the amount of work that she does.
I agree.
So I, I think.
So is that a motion?
It's a motion, yes.
Was you agreeing a support?
Yes, a support.
All right. So, so we've got a motion by Mr. Olgiati with support by Mr. Brado to extend an offer of employment based on the contract and letter of agreement. Any questions, discussion?
Hey, just again, this, this employee and the work that she does with her staff has greatly improved the way our township operates and it would be a, a loss to lose to, to not have her in that position anymore. I think securing her for another four years, um, would really put us in a great shape. We've spent a lot of time talking about the last four years as well as the next four years. Um, you know, as, as the person that oversees that department, talking about some of the corrections and foundation that we've laid in the accounting department. That's really what we were able to do in these four years. You know, COVID really sort of slowed things down and we're able to do as much as we'd like. Uh, but we've really rebuilt that base in the accounting so everyone can have great faith in the numbers and, and where people's money is being held. But looking forward to the next four years, we really see an opportunity to make some really good improvements that make it easier for us to do our job as well as for the residents to get an insight as to how we're operating ourselves.
And at the same time, during those four years, not only, you know, fixing things, making improvements, but, um, GASB is government.
Accounting Standards Board.
Government Accounting Standards Board. We throw around GASB, the acronym, but, um, from time to time, that board comes out with additional letters or, um, documents for guidance. So we've had to adopt a number of those in the past four years and there's no reason to think that that's stopping. So, um, you know, it is a, you, you know, we, you, you want to be in compliance, you want to make sure you're, you know, satisfying those things and it takes good people to make sure that happens.
And I just want to say that, you know, working hand in hand with Nikki from the treasures department, we've streamlined so many policies and procedures, um, for not only documentation, but to, uh, to streamline actually a work effort as well. Um, we, there were a lot of policies that were, and procedures that were not in place. They are in place. Um, we've reduced the number of checks that are produced, paper checks, that's all money. And we're, we're still working on improvements, things like P-cards and other, um, uh, controls that are going to streamline going forward. So, um, I, I can't say enough about Nikki and, and, and the way we've, we've come, you know, come so far between the treasury and, and, because we work so close. But I just want to say that, you know, she's been a, a big asset.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, we have a motion by Mr. Olgiati with support by Mr. Brado to, uh, renew the contract, uh, for additional four years. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Next on our agenda is public comments. So we'll open the floor at this time for public comments. They can be about any subject you like. We ask that you try to limit them to five minutes in length.
Good evening. My name is Ramona Romero and I live on here on Point. Mr. Verkess, after our meeting, um, last week, um, I left there very confused. I wasn't sure if I wanted to continue this, not because I didn't think that our veterans' memorial should remain as it is, but because I was worried about Lieutenant Colonel Odell's family, his wife being harassed. And, um, it wasn't worth, um, having her harmed at all. So, um, when I got home, I called Mr. Lorenz, who was a speaker last week, and, um, talked to him about the meeting. And, um, my last question to him was, um, did we drop it? He emphatically said, no, we continue until it's done. For me, done would be the fact that we'd have a beautiful memorial for Lieutenant Colonel Odell somewhere other than our veterans' garden. A couple of weeks ago, um, Barbara, his daughter, called me and, um, we talked and, um, we agreed that we would, I would do nothing else to embarrass the family until after this meeting. She was going to be at this meeting. Um, I did call her an informer of it today, but I understand she has an appointment to see you. So therefore, we're going to extend that till after your appointment. We won't be doing anything, um, regarding this until after her appointment with you. Friday, uh, after talking to Mr. Lorenz, I talked to about thirty-two people who are, um, opposing to changes to our veterans' garden, letting them know, did they want to continue this? And it was an emphatic yes, we will continue. Today, I talked to thirty-six people. And, um, of those thirty-six people, I didn't ask them if they wanted to continue because we had enough people that did want to, so we were definitely going to. But those thirty-six, I asked them if I could ask them for their help and support and they are all willing to help and support. So we definitely have a lot of people that still want to do this. When I, I called tonight to inform Barbara, his daughter, about the meeting, um, I left a message on a recorder because she did want to come. But, um, I would appreciate a call from you or your office as to your meeting with her, as to what, what the occasion, I mean, what will happen, because that'll determine what we will be following up. Thank you.
Thank you.
See William Barle, twenty-six-year resident, clean-cut, do-gooder boy next door. Clean up, fix up, people helping people. Just want to remind everyone, check out Save Lake St. Clair on Facebook and stay up to date on everything. Also, after the meeting, I'm going to need to speak with township attorney, Mr. Verkess and Mr. Tommello for probably a whole twenty seconds. Uh, we got a few issues we need to address. That'll take a whole twenty seconds out of your life, so, um, I appreciate that and, uh, we'll take it from there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, we'll close the floor for public comment. Is there any board comment?
I, um, get asked all the time about Gino's surf. Is there anything you guys can share? I, I usually try to tell the residents, I'm sure they're paying their taxes, there's not much else we can do. We're seeing a little bit of progress. I mean, am I giving the right information?
It's, yeah. It's, I mean, so, um, I'd like to see them open too.
Sure.
They have active building permits. Uh, the, the, the activity at the site seems to come in spurts. Uh, there was a time when, when the property owner was, uh, engaged in litigation, civil litigation. And I believe that was plus or minus coinciding with COVID. So there was some time lost. So pre-COVID, they had made some progress in construction. That progress stopped between COVID and that litigation. So that, that was.
On, on not involving us.
Nothing, nothing really to us. We were not engaging. There was a litig- there was, I think there was civil litigation regarding who owned the property, property. Uh, we were not a party to that litigation, but obviously, if you're arguing about who owns it, you're probably not spending money on improving it. So, um, we, we've, we've tried to do everything we can, uh, to be supportive and neutral at the same time. There were some issues, I believe, with, uh, plan review. And so we said, in order to make sure that there wasn't some perception that we were otherwise, um, you know, treating them differently, we, we, we had agreed to, uh, third-party for, uh, plan review. I couldn't tell you where that's at right now.